Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. We'll call our meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation if you bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and all the blessings you've given us. Thank you also for this group that was willing to make the decisions that make the city run properly. And all the city staff, keep them safe, keep them well. And those that put their lives on the line, bring them home safe and bring them home soon. In your heavenly name we pray, amen. Would you please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, we are the Graham City Council and rest assured that anyone that wants to speak will have opportunity to do so. So the first thing we will note too is our consent agenda. A is approval amendments December the 4th. B is approval amendments December the 12th. C is the tax releases and refunds. And D is appoint Nikki Smith to the Historic Museum Advisory Board. Does anybody want to pull any of the consent agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Sir, move.
Thank you, Griffin. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Next we can go to downtown small area plan approved contract with Tool Design Group. Who is handling this for the staff? Nathan, if you would, please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As you're aware, in their 2018-2019 budget year, the Graham City Council funded their match of a portion of a small area plan. While Graham allocated $50,000, the Burlington Graham Medical Polite Organization and North Carolina Department of Transportation also submitted $50,000 to this plan, bringing the total to $150,000. In September, the city released a request for qualifications to the NC Plan List Serp, as well as we posted it on our website. Out of a total of 11 responses, staff narrowed down the pool to three interviewees. Subsequent to the interviewees, staff recommended Tool Design Group as the preferred design firm. Small area plan will allow the city of Graham to inventory our downtown infrastructure and create estimates for renewing lifespan of the water, sewer, and storm infrastructure. At the same time, we anticipate looking at potential updates to the streetscape, street trees, parking, and transportation pieces. And we did originally write that we request that the council motion to approve the contract with a Tool Design Group. And given that it was placed before the council tonight, we would prefer if maybe there was a motion to approve that the city manager into an agreement with the Tool Design Group along the same lines as what's in front of you, just in case there's a typo or something in it that we missed.
Okay. Questions for the staff? Melody, let's start with you, please.
No, sir, not at this time.
Griffin, questions?
Yes, Nathan, Task Six on the proposal about the Highway 86 corridor study. What, where is that and why is that pertaining to our downtown?
So Task Six was something that was added on at the recommendation of a few of the design firms. And that is from the interstate to, although it says in some of the literature, Market Street, it was recommended to be extended up to Albright, where Main Street takes that left hernish. And the idea was that the corridor into downtown should also be evaluated at the same time for the level of attractiveness and any design guidelines or characteristics that should be included in there.
Are we talking Highway 87?
Yes.
Okay, so I found one typo.
Sorry. Well, that, that was in a draft document that was released on time. It's not the one that is in front of you now.
The one in our packet said 86.
Correct. The one that was in the packet is wrong. The one that was on your desk when you got here.
Gotcha.
Says 87.
Okay. The only other comment was when it lists the stakeholders, the business association, the local businesses are not mentioned. I would like to add that if possible, but that's just a comment, not...
What, I'm sorry?
The Business Association.
Graham Area Business.
Or local businesses, either way.
Okay.
As a stakeholder.
Is that possible, or to add the Graham Area Business Association as a stakeholder?
It will be done.
Nice. Is that all right with everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Griffin? Okay. Chip, questions?
No questions. I'm just glad to know that we're not in Hillsborough. 86 is in Hillsborough.
Yes, sir.
Please, questions, please.
I do, Mayor. So Nathan, the hiring committee, what was it about this firm that was convincing that you guys wanted to recommend them? What was it about them? What'd you like about them?
There were a number of things that made this firm stand out from the others. Amongst those is they appeared to tailor their response to our request for proposals to Graham rather than just saying, well, this is the projects that we've done before. So they looked at other courthouse squares that have been done across the country, pulled some ideas off of those, and, and had that as their, the flagship portion. They also promised more for the dollar than any of the other groups did. And in addition, when they came, they seemed to have done the research in a way that some of the other groups hadn't, quoting pieces from the 2035 plan. And in fact, one of them even referenced some of the stuff in the Graham 1967 downtown plan that council member McClure and I have spoken about in the past.
Wow. So what was the timeframe in the request for proposals to have this completed?
The original timeframe was to try and get it done such that council will be able to adopt it in their, and I'm, I'm not sure if it was the June or the July meeting, but six months after today's date, which would allow the most amount of time for Ali Williams, Carmen and King to subsequently design anything that the council desired so that when the DOT came through doing their repaving, they would be able to do so. In the contract, it was requested by the review committee to have some sort of clause that would encourage Tool to finish the design work as soon as possible. And Tool was able to state that they would forego $10,000 of the contract funds if they were not able to deliver a substantially complete, complete plan, substantially complete being defined as ready for city council on or before August 8th, 2019, making the assumption that that was a fault of Tool Design Group rather than in a world where, you know, Aaron or myself or Frankie, for whatever reason, get taken out of the picture for a couple of months and our reviews are slowed down.
So this penalty clause is actually in the amended documents that was submitted tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. And this will fall into line with DOT's requirement to have this in place adopted by this council before the repaving process, which is the reason we're putting all this together?
Yes, sir.
If, if they come in by August?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I noticed that their main office is out of state. Do they have a local office in North Carolina?
Yes, sir, they have an office in Raleigh.
Wow, okay. And how about availability of staff? Did they indicate availability of the staff that they currently have?
In the original proposal, everyone indicated availability of staff. But I, I think that the thing that speaks best about Tool in terms of the availability of their staff is their willingness to leave in the clause that they lose money if they don't deliver.
Right.
Now, the original draft that I sent to Tool said the July 8th date for approval to be placed before council, and they changed it to August. But one month for a contractor to say, yes, we will forego money.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty big. So part of the small area downtown plan that's ultimately important to us and is going to cost us the most money arguably, is going to be what we can't see in this infrastructure. Do they have engineers on staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And in fact, in, in discussing with them potential timelines, Tool said that they hope that the quality of their plan and their work ends up with the city retaining their services to design some of the infrastructure that they're recommending.
Wow.
Now, they would really have to blow us out of the water because we have a great relationship with Ali Williams, Carmen and King. So I'm not sure that that's likely, but it indicates that they have the individuals on staff who are of a caliber to design those pieces.
But that's a unique opportunity in the sense that they have a genuine understanding going through the process of putting a plan together to move to that next phase, and that's improvement on the plan.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's, that's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
All right, I want to thank Lee for taking my place during this process. Lee did a wonderful job and I appreciate it. I was visiting my grandbaby and Lee took my place and did an excellent job. And that's why we have a good mayor pro temp. Thanks, sir. Does anybody from the floor want to speak on this? If not, then we'll discuss it among ourselves. What does everybody think? Any changes other than the Graham Area Business Association being a stakeholder? Melody?
Yes, sir. I think with the corrections that they made on the copy that we had tonight, that's the care of it.
Deborah?
Things good to me.
Mayor, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, with that, I need, I will move you to page 12 in your agenda and I'll ask the motion from the floor.
Mayor, I move that we approve the contract with Tool Design Group for our downtown small area plan and adopt the amended language presented tonight and also include in stakeholders as the Graham Area Business Association.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Next, we go to number three, Main Street Program Discussion. Mary, I think you're handling this for us, please. Let's have your name and address, please.
Mary Fawcett, 1697 Challenge. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the North Carolina Main Street and Rural Planning Centers Program. Tonight's presentation is a collaborative effort between myself, Mary Fawcett, Downtown Development Coordinator, and Alexa Powell, City Planner. Go ahead and advance the next slide. The Main Street Approach distinguishes every community and commercial district as different with its own distinctive assets and the sense of place. The Main Street Approach offers community-based revitalization initiatives with a practical, adaptable framework for downtown transformation that is easily tailored to local conditions. The Main Street Approach helps communities get started with revitalization and grows with them over time. Go ahead and advance the next slide. The map on the screen displays the North Carolina Main Street Communities, established in 1980, four populations that are up to 50,000. There are 66 communities. There's also an initiative, Small Town Main Street Communities, with populations less than 7,500, that was established in 2003 with 16 communities. More recently, the Downtown Associate Community Program, that's a prerequisite to the North Carolina Main Street Program that was established in 2015 with four communities, designate the North Carolina cities on the map before you. The Downtown Associate Community Program is the first step towards the North Carolina Main Street Destination. State staff work with eligible communities to equip them with tools to build a sustainable organizational foundation and conduct strategic economic development planning, which strengthens their downtown development efforts. The North Carolina Main Street and Rural Planning Center selects communities every other year via a competitive application process. 2019 presents the opportunity to make application to be considered as a community for the Downtown Associate Community Program. The next two slides take a closer look at the financial involvement and a few specifics related to Ashboro, Morganton, Fuquay Varina, Salisbury, Burlington, and Hickory. Ashboro is two years into the Downtown Associate Community Program. Their coordinator is one of the city planners and he shared with us that they are currently seeking to develop their advisory board and start implementing action steps from their downtown vision plan completed in May 2018. Next, you see Morganton and Fuquay Varina. Both are established North Carolina Main Street designees with a long history with the program. Morganton with 37 years and Fuquay Varina with 13. Both have financial commitments much more robust than Ashboro. Furthermore, both have well-established loan or incentive programs. As you can see, there's a sharp distinction in the level of financial commitment between participating in the Downtown Associate Community Program and moving to the Main Street Destination. On the next slide, you'll see Salisbury, Burlington, and Hickory are representative, who all three are Main Street designees spanning years of involvement with the program. Again, these three cities demonstrate there will be future financial responsibilities if we decide to move forward with making application to the Downtown Associate Community Benefits of the program strengthens the community steps and downtown economic development through the partnership with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Rural Economic Development Division, and the Main Street and Rural Planning Center. Furthermore, it provides guidance on identifying community assets, economic drivers, works through SWOT analysis, creates an organizational structure to implement a downtown vision, downtown economic implementation strategies, and downtown implementation plans. And finally, works with the Downtown Associate Community on finding ways to develop financial resources. This may be beneficial to follow through on recommendations on the small area plan. As mentioned earlier, tonight's presentation is outlining the Main Street Program, bringing to light the first step or prerequisite is to make application to the Downtown Associate Community Program. This year's deadline is in June. If council supports staff to continue moving forward towards making application to the Downtown Associate Community Program, council understands making application means there's a financial support and a minimum of $5,000 annually. If accepted into the program, it may take up to three years before Graham can be designated as a Main Street community, at which time and only at that time can branding and naming affiliations occur. During the Downtown Associate Community Program, the designee is not eligible to nominate projects for the North Carolina Main Street or Small Town Main Street Awards and are not eligible to nominate champions until they move up to the full North Carolina Main Street Destination. Nor can Downtown Associate Community Programs apply for Main Street Solutions funding. In addition, Downtown Associate Community Programs are not eligible for downtown redevelopment funds. So thank you for this opportunity to come before you, to discuss with you about the steps to move in towards becoming a Main Street designee.
Here with your mind, answering some questions?
Not a problem.
Griffin, please.
So I guess the, this is the on-ramp for the Main Street Program. What, what, while we're in, under this heading or this label, what are we eligible for? Or where does that $5,000 annually go? I guess it's more.
The $5,000 brings the staff to town that will work with us through the analysis. It also ensures that we're committed to going to the conferences. So it's showing a level of investment through Graham if we make application to it.
But we'll have the involvement, really, of the Main Street Program, just not the designation. Is that accurate?
The resources are there.
Deborah, questions, please?
How long will this program last?
It can last up to three years.
Is that $5,000 for the three years or is it?
Annually.
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 Okay, thank you.
So it's a three-year program, but we can qualify earlier than the three-year period?
We can, yep.
Also too, they mentioned that it's a competitive process to be selected into the DAC program. What are they looking for as far as it would qualify us to be a good applicant for that program?
That there's sustainability, that there's a vision, there's a mission, that there is interest and support in moving the downtown board, that there's roots within historic preservation also.
Good. And I understand that as you, on one of the slides you mentioned, there's going to be a 20-hour commitment by someone within the city if we're accepted into the DAC program.
That's correct.
And I assume the program coordinator would fall under your jurisdiction or you would be that coordinator? Is that?
If that's the direction, yep, the council wanted to move in.
Understand that this process may take up to three years, but during that process, we're going to be collecting data that's going to be used to apply to be a Main Street city. So what kind of data is it that we would be collecting to put in an application?
So we take inventory into our downtown businesses, what our job workforce employment looks like, how many residential units we have. And it really, we provide the information, but we don't have to crunch the numbers. They do that for us.
Gotcha. So hypothetically, in the future, if we were to go through this program, the DAC program, and we were appointed to be a Main Street community, at that point, what would be, of course, we'd open up a lot of opportunities, a lot of grant money, a lot of opportunities. But at that point, what would it take to maintain the Main Street status on an annual basis?
They're, they're very strong and there are four pillars. And then there are eight principles, and so we'd have to make sure that we live up to their expectations of meeting those four pillars and that we maintain the criteria of having an advisory board.
Right.
And that we continue to produce the data that they ask us. So every year, we're providing that annual budget and showing if we have new businesses that move in, et cetera.
Right, okay. And that advisory board is something that once we're awarded a DAC designation, that we have to put in place?
That is correct.
Okay. Would it be an annual fee once we're adopted as a Main Street community?
There is a level of financial continual support that's needed.
Okay.
And that's what I was showing on the slides.
Is, is the different levels?
Of the budget.
And it, and it all depends on the grants and what's being given and how much you're accepted as far as the grant and what the matching part of a grant may be.
And what the program.
And what you're going to put in.
What the robustness of the programs look like.
Is there just an annual basic, like the $5,000 fee that we're going to have to pay annually to be, just to be part of the entry program? Is there a fee like that to maintain your Main Street status?
That's probably at a minimum.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
There are some required trainings that must be attended by not only the Main Street Coordinator, but also the boards that work with the Main Street Coordinators. So it's likely to pop up some from the $5,000. But for trainings, they occur on a relatively, relatively regular basis all over the state. So you're not looking at hotels. It's only a single day thing. So, you know, 10,000 should be more than generous, even with a new board for training purposes, once we're adopted into the Main Street Program.
So this advisory board, how many people's going to be on this board? Does the state designate? How many people must be? This is a federal program that's kind of handed down through the states to adopt.
They, they work with you in creating it as far as the guidelines, anywhere from seven to probably 15. It varies from city to city.
Okay, so there is some flexibility in that board itself, how many people are going to actually serve on that board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
Melody, questions, please?
Mary, can you tell me what you think our greatest, our greatest assets are in developing this or going in this direction? For you, how you feel about those?
I think accountability.
Great.
It's connecting with developing a work plan and then having a resource that can, I can continually check in with.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Does anybody from the floor want to speak on this? Then, then we'll go to the council and talk this over. What does everybody think?
I think this is a worthy program.
Okay. I had a, I should have asked, I guess, the MSD at the bottom, 16 cents per 100, oh, well, .16. Biggest one was .42. So how does that work? Frankie, would you want to?
It's a municipal service district and you see them in downtowns frequently where there's unique service requirements in downtowns. And so there's a, a special tax rate levied for those services or improvements. As far as I know, we've never had one in Graham, but...
Are we proposing one now? Let me go that way.
Is it part of the Main Street Program?
Don't know that it's necessarily a part of it.
It's not required.
But there's a finance, that financial commitment has to come from somewhere. Is that your general levy across all properties or is it a special levy just in a service district?
Good point.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Lost my page here. With that being said, I need to move you to page 15 in your agenda and ask for a motion from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct city staff to continue research into the Downtown Community Association Program and collect data to support a future application.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Good. Next, we go to number four, a public-private partnership, East Interstate Road Development. Frankie, are you handling this one?
I think Alexa's going to take the lead.
Ah, Alexa, okay. Hey, Alexa, get your name and address, please, ma'am.
Alexa Powell, 1720 Old St. Mark's Church Road. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight. For your consideration this evening, we will discuss the idea of entering into a public-private partnership to develop industrial spec building on city-owned piece of property. In 2009, the city of Graham acquired a 5.5 acre parcel of land on East Interstate Service Road in Graham, here. Thus far, the city has about 3,000, or 35, $335,000 invested in the property. The tax value of the property is currently listed at $250,000 and has been on the market for over nine years. Since putting the property up for sale, the city has received only one offer in the amount of $175,000 in 2014 for the property for a surface parking lot. The city council rejected this offer as the price was well below market value and would have resulted in a $175,000 loss to the city. Given the lack of interest in the property in its current form, the city has an opportunity to try a different approach. In order to revitalize, to realize a full value of the property on East Interstate Service Road, the city may wish to consider entering into a public-private partnership, or P3, as an alternative procurement method. A public-private partnership is a capital improvement project whereby government and the private sector enter into an agreement for the construction of an improvement for a critical public purpose, which may include the development of either private or public facilities. One important advantage of this P3 project delivery method is the private developer must contribute at least 50% of the financing for the total cost of, necessary to deliver the capital improvement project. And by sharing the expense, the city limits its financial risk. To begin the P3 process, the city of Graham must make a written finding that it has critical need for the project itself. This exploratory measure which we're going through tonight allows staff to determine its programming requirements for the facilities to be constructed under the P3 contract, which forms the basis for the request for qualifications. And then the city publishes the RFQ in which the applicant must submit evidence of financial stability, experience with similar projects, project team selection, and a statement of availability, along with a project timeline completion.
Explain RFQ.
A request for qualification, essentially similar to the process we went through the small area plan with in terms of going out for bidding, getting the best qualified candidate. The state statute requires that agencies select firms qualified to provide construction services on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualification for the project without regard to fee other than the unit price information and thereafter negotiate a contract with that company for those services at a fair and reasonable fee with the best qualified firm based on those discussions. The city evaluates the responses and may negotiate with one or more of the respondents from the RFQ during the evaluation process. After the evaluation is complete, the city may award the development contract to the private developer it determines is best qualified. And the city must publish the terms of that agreement at least 30 days in advance of making a final determination and approving a contract, and that contract will come before city council. In terms of the benefits, we have those of this project, developing an industrial building on the city-owned property has the potential to increase the property's marketability as well as fair market value and help the city realize a stronger return on investment for those funds that have already been expended. In addition, the North Carolina Department of Commerce has indicated that a very high percentage of companies which will consider locating in the state initially require an existing building as one of the criteria for localities which they will consider. So according to a local developer, almost 80% of the market expects an existing building and 60% are looking for properties that are greater than 100,000 square feet. Now, there are currently no modern industrial properties on the market in Graham, in high ceilings, big floor plans, that kind of thing. And so this, without an available industrial product, we are missing out on attracting that kind of development to locate here. So further having a business-ready building to market to potential buyers may substantially increase the city's ability to monetize the asset and return it to the tax books as an income-producing property. And then finally, once built, the project has the potential to attract a new employer to the area, diversify the job market, and providing new employment opportunities. Finally, this proposal is in line with several policies and strategies listed in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, chief among them being Policy 2.1.7 Partnerships, which states that Graham will continue to develop opportunities, public-private partnerships, to coordinate investment strategies and nurture leadership in our community. As with most development projects, there are risks associated and some concerns with this process itself. Private developers will, of course, require some financial incentive in exchange for that risk that they're taking on in financing partial, part of the project. And so that reduces the potential return for the city on that investment and it generates private profits. But there's a trade-off. But there's a trade-off there in terms of they're providing capital to begin the project itself. Further, project oversight is limited to the benchmarks that we create in the development agreement with the negotiated contract. So we have to make sure when we structure that we include certain things that we want to happen and when we would like to see those completed substantially. In addition, the developer selected may not be the lowest bid. So the request for qualification process aims to select the best qualified candidate rather than solely based on pricing. So finally, there is a potential for the property to not be immediately purchased or leased, depending on the development agreement terms. So once the developers finish putting up the building, we may not see somebody knocking down our door to lease the property, and that delay could have some financial risk for the city. There are a variety of models for structuring the development agreement, which can be explored if the council is interested in moving forward with this type of project, and based on the negotiations with the request for qualification respondents. In the agenda packet, I've included a statement of critical needs for considered adoption. All that being said, I'll open up the floor to any questions the council may have about this proposal.
Question, start with Chip, please.
I realize this is just getting started, but do we have any idea what size building you'd be talking about?
So that's a great question. It will ultimately come down to, once we've, if we've approved this process, a group will get together and determine how big a building we could get on the site, considering what other site elements would need to be included in that plan, and try to get the most, the biggest building we could get on there with those considerations. So we'd obviously try to shoot for over the 100,000 mark to get the biggest number of that 80% who's looking for, or 60% that's looking for 100,000 square feet or more. But it would depend on the actual site and what could be developed there. It's only 5.5 acres. So we need a little bit of advice from developers to give us a sense of how much, how many square feet we could potentially put on that site.
Right. So did I understand you to say that the city would be required to put 50% of the cost?
So the developer would be required to put up at least 50%. In the discussion and contract negotiations, we could potentially ask that the developer provide more than the 50% in exchange for a certain percentage of the profit once sold or some other way of increasing their commitment and decreasing the expense on the city's side.
This would be, this would not be a lease. It would be a sale.
We would want to reserve the ability to sell or lease the property. It's my understanding from speaking with several developers that it's easier to have the flexibility to determine what the market is looking for a sale or if they're looking just to lease the property.
Thank you. Please, questions, please.
I do, Mayor. So this is a new process for us because I haven't seen anything like this come before since I've been on council.
Correct.
So it looks like to me that all the questions I have, which are numerous, are going to be in the details. And that's going to be in the, so right now, you're just looking to put together a letter of need to say we can move to the next step. My question is, when the particulars are put together and before this goes out for a request for qualifications, this will come back in front of the council so that we can review it and go through it and see what's important for us from the city's standpoint?
Absolutely.
Am I correct in assuming that?
So this, we can absolutely come back before the city council and provide additional detail about what type of building or what size building we're proposing to put out in the request for qualification letter itself so that we get the RFQ respondents that are, have the same focus as this council.
Because obviously, the question that Councilman Turner brought up was the fact of how big a building, because the size of the building would determine, from an incentive standpoint, where we may be able to offer something. You know, obviously, the larger the building, the more revenue it can generate, the more incentives you could possibly look at. And without knowing what that number is, and this particular parcel is heavily encumbered. Am I correct? And it's actually, we're required, when we approve this parcel, to provide a cross-access for Lot 2, which is behind it, and to provide 35 parking spaces, which is going to take up a good portion of this property. So there's a lot of challenges with this situation and with the property alone. So I want to encourage council to at least, the idea of bringing this back in front of us, once we get some of these particulars in place, and just explore some of the options available to us as far as the size of the building and all the requirements we're going to ask from the builder, or the incentives we're going to provide to the builder. Does all that sound reasonable?
And some of those details about the size of the property, once the request for qualification goes out, they'll be able to better tell us what can fit on that site. So.
Right, right. And that's my, yeah, that's my concern, is that we need to know upfront before we put in the particulars of what we're looking to get out of that piece of property and try to salvage something for the citizens as far as try to regain some of the money we've lost in the property through the years, which is basically $300,000 and $35,000. So that's, that's what's important to me, is that we make sure that we know what we can offer and what size building can go on there and what kind of revenue it's going to generate so that we can see if this is a worthy process for us to enter into. Is that reasonable to say?
We can certainly bring a draft RFQ back to the council for consideration.
Because even though builders are required by law to put up 50%, a builder could also put up 100%. We could coordinate the land, throw the land in the equation, and they, when they, the day they get paid, they could in turn pay the city a set amount for the land. Whether that's an incentive enough, we don't know. But we don't know what size building we're going to get on this piece of property. And looking at this property and looking at all the challenges, it concerns me.
And one of the things that the request for qualifications process will do is they don't design the actual building until they've got the contract essentially.
Exactly.
So that's one of the, this first step is, do we want to move forward with this kind of a process? Are we interested in learning more about what are, what are other options because we haven't sold it in nine years? So creating other avenues for selling this property. So that's, that's really the intent.
Looking at other examples, was there other examples where builders brought more to the table than the 50%? Did they bring more? Was land involved as an incentive? How did all that, in the experience with?
There were several projects where the land itself was not gifted to the developer as part of the financial, to incentivize the developer to actually take on the project. There was also a structure where after 12 months of not sell or being on the market with a shell building, that they would take over that ownership or that lease agreement, essentially, as the city. I wouldn't recommend that structure necessarily, but that's the variation in the types of structures that are available to, depending on what the council would like to see and what the market is willing to do in that negotiation stage.
So at the completion of the building, when it was sold or leased, either one, there was the land conveyed to the property owner if it was sold or to the builder? How was the city paid back for the amount of money put into the building in some of the other examples? An agreement with the builder and an agreement upon the sale that the city would be paid back? If it was leased, was an agreement that a percentage was paid back to the city out of the lease until the city was made whole?
I believe the one that I'm referring to in, I think it was one of, can you go back to the slide with the different, Dorchester County? I believe their process was essentially, that was part of the incentive for the business that went in as opposed to the developer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Melody, questions, please.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alexa, we are in this process, and we ask for the RFQs. What if they come back and we find that it just isn't working out? The building size versus the parking size, it just doesn't feel like it's going to benefit us to move forward in it. At that point, can we, through this, determine that we are at a stopping point? We found out all the information we needed. We cannot be advantageous in the process. Can we stop at this point?
Yes.
Thank you.
Griffin, questions, please.
Most of mine have been answered. And I understand that, you know, we're just starting this process. But the one, have we explored the concept of a build-to-suit project where we actually have a tenant? That's, that's the big risk here for me. You said there's not a building that exists like this in Graham, and might be a reason. I mean, that would be my concern.
So the challenge with the market is that the market wants to see an existing building. They want to walk the space. They want to make sure that their operations fit into that space. And so the concept of getting an employer to come here and we promise them a building isn't necessarily, wow, that would be great. That hasn't existed. If there was that buyer, we may have already sold the property to that individual regardless of whether we were able to build a building on it. Because they can go out and hire the contractor to actually build the building. It's just, they want to be able to move in six months from now and not a year and a half after permitting process or whatever needs to occur on that site to make it, you know, go vertical, so.
Mr. Mayor. One piece, there are many buildings like this that exist in Graham. They're all fully occupied. It's all the ones on J Lane. There's a number on Parker Street.
So on the market, I think, is the key point there, that there are no properties on the market that fill this gap.
Gotcha. Okay, that's good clarification. I'm good.
Well, we sort of got in this position because of a public partner, public-private partnership that went bad. So we're in this position because of one. What is our guarantee that we won't do this again?
I can't make any guarantees. And I don't think any developer can guarantee that you're going to land an industrial user even after they've built. That's kind of the risk that you take as a developer. But what will be an indicator of the level of interest is if we get a number of RFQ respondents, because the market is telling them they need a site or they need to develop something that's ready for the market. And so they're not going to respond if there's no desire, there's no buyer at the end of the rainbow, because they have an incentive. 50% of their money is in this property potentially, and they want to get that return as much as the city. They have skin in the game, so to speak, in terms of, they want to recruit that investment, make money off of it, and then, you know, move on to their next project. If they have money invested in a place that they can't flip that property pretty rapidly, then they're operating a loss for that capital.
Well, Samet does this every day in, around the county. Have we contacted them?
Some of this information is questions that we've asked Samet, as well as other local developers, to give us some insight. They've been working on the North Carolina Industrial Center in Meben, have several spec buildings that have subsequently, even prior to them being fully operational, people have purchased those or are in lease agreements. So being able to see and feel and get and experience those facilities has been instrumental in getting more of those properties leased.
I guess what I'm asking is, as the process goes along, do we bury this somewhere in our website? Or do we go out and reach out to people and say that this is available?
So I think if you guys move forward with it, the developer and part of the development agreement, if we get a RFQ we want to sign a contract with, they're incentivized because they want to sell the property as much as we do to help us with that marketing. So that's an additional reason that it's helpful to have the building in place because they want to sell it as much as we do. So we have to do less of that legwork. But there'll also be partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce that would be helpful in getting more people through that facility to take a look at it and that kind of thing.
Thank you, Alexa. I appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, just to clear up one thing, I know I'm starting to question over again, but for staff, may I ask one more question? I just want to clear something up. So the process, just, I just want to make sure I understand the process. The process is, we will collectively, as a city, kind of look to see what kind of building we're going to get on this parcel. But the process properly handled is that, once we award, after the requests for qualifications go out and we award that request for qualifications, then that company will start the design phase of the building.
Yes, that's correct.
So they're not coming to us with $50,000 to $100,000 of stamped engineer plans for approval during the, yeah, exactly.
So their qualifications are what's going to determine which firm that we select.
Because that would not be the proper way to handle this, to ask for that kind of requirement to potentially be told no. So they will only design it after they realize that they're awarded the contract to build.
Right. And the RFQ will include a few specifications, the size of the building that we're looking, and it could be a range. It doesn't have to be 100,000 square feet.
But it's just, it's just a guesstimation.
Right.
For no better use of the word.
Right. So that's the level of detail that we'll request, is that you have some building that meets these parameters, has this number of contractors that are in the underutilized business qualifications. So things like that can be put in the RFQ to be submitted.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Alex. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim asked another question. I'll poll the council again. Melody?
Yes, sir.
Griffin?
No, sir.
Shepherd?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you being here. Yes, sir. Tom, come up. Give us your name and address. Anybody else? Get ready. We'll go to the floor here in just a second. Yes, sir.
Tom Boney with the Alamance News, 114 West Elm in downtown Graham, 1240 Gemstone Court in Graham as a resident. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your question, which is, to me, the fundamental one in terms of the city got in trouble in this situation and having spent that money for a public-private partnership, which was your question. I guess one thing I heard two different answers to it, and I'm not certain on, the city won't expend any money until there's a partner. Is that correct?
Yes.
Won't do a spec building.
Correct.
The city's not planning to do a spec building. All right. Is there any particular reason that it is specifically an industrial targeting?
No, we're just throwing it against the wall, Tom. We're trying to get this out of the way.
The current zoning is industrial.
Say again?
The current zoning is industrial, so, yeah. Would industrial allow either a hotel or an office building?
They would have to come back in and get rezoned.
Yeah, I don't think that. But is it, I mean, is that a good idea? But can it be included within that designation? Are either of those uses allowed?
It's heavy industrial. I don't look that up very often, though.
All right. Then, Mr. Mayor, can we go back a slide? What is the partnership that's listed as Meben and the North Carolina Industrial Center? I don't, I'm not aware of any public partnership.
I believe Meben has investments in the infrastructure.
Other than basic water and sewer lines and sidewalk and roads? I'm not aware of anything other than that. Does that count as a public-private partnership? I mean, that's.
Pretty substantial investment.
Well, that would be true of anything that you, any industrial area. The cities, Graham and Meben have the one that's the joint industrial part. But it doesn't fit the category of what I heard described, is what I don't understand.
No, there has not been a P3 in Alamance County.
All right. But I mean, I don't understand how that's listed as a parallel. All right. Is there a timeframe of when you're expecting to get whatever proposal you're going to next then put out there?
We haven't set a timeframe. I think the council, if we move forward with this, we want to expedite it because this needs to be off of our books and onto the county's tax books and the city.
And the city hasn't made any overtures to private investors or realtors or?
Yes, it's good for sale.
It's been on the market actively. The listing agreement has expired. So let's step back, take the 30, 40,000-foot view. We have a piece of property that's owned by the public that's not being used, and effectively is holding the earth together. And so what Alexa and the planning staff is doing is trying to bring ideas to the council to say, hey, you want to try this to get something going? There are very few properties left in the county that have water and sewer and road access and interstate visibility. So. So, and she's right. I've been on many, many site visits with folks and they do want to see buildings. They want to be able to be in operation in six to eight months, not two to three years. And sometimes it will take months upon months just to get certain permits. And time is money in the private sector.
But that's the part I want to understand. When you, when you give that example, it sounds as though the city is going to build a spec building and hope someone will come.
The city is going to ask the private market, give us a response. We desire a spec building. Can you build one? And what would you require of us? That, that's the idea. We don't have to accept anything. It's another idea to try to get this property back into use.
All right, again, and you, you haven't directly approached Samet already in all this time?
No, it would have to be a total, you can't just pick one company.
Right.
Have we done our homework? Yes, we have talked to developers. Yes, we have. We have talked to developers. We've talked to economic developers. We've gotten opinions.
All right. Does Samet have any vacant properties left in the, their little, uh, river bend, you know?
No, they're full.
There are, there are none in Graham.
Thank you, Tom.
Oh, in terms of not, there not being one, uh, in, in terms of that size, that larger size, the mill, um, over there doesn't count or is it not for sale? The, um, old panel, I guess.
Cannon mills.
Cannon mills on Parker.
Yeah.
Yes.
Unfortunately, it's been gutted in the amount of money it would take to refurbish that now. They've gone in there and res- salvaged the building. And salvaging a building means the sprinkler system and the metal and all the electronics and everything has been taken out of it. Right now, they can't even go in there and work because they're not protected.
Okay. But it's not a sufficiently large shell building, quote unquote?
Not one that you could do in a couple of years because the amount of money it would take to put back into that building to get it inhabitable would pay for this building here.
All right. Will a thousand, uh, excuse me, a hundred thousand, uh, square foot building fit on a 5.5 acre lot with the adequate parking?
Depends on the willingness to go up.
Go up what?
Vertical.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Come up, sir, if you would.
Hey. Jennifer Tally, 808 Sideview Street, Graham.
Rick Hurlacher, uh, 1724 Petty Road in Graham with a business at 395 Stern's Drive in Graham.
Mr. Hurlacher, we're glad to see you here. And you too, Jennifer.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hurlacher's been in business for quite a number of years, run a very successful business. Um, they do truck and trailer repair and, um, they run a tow business as well. And, um, they're very interested in making an offer on the property. It's one of the things I talked to Jerry about before the meeting, if we could still submit an offer to the city and, um, hopefully recoup some of your money and also get what you want, which is another building. And, um, you know, work with the Hurlackers on what you do want to see there. He might could develop a, put a, um, a building on the section of the land of the 5.5 acres to suit his needs. And then possibly even, um, leave part of the property open to put another building that maybe he could either rent out or, or something like that. But he's very interested in staying in, being in Graham and, and developing the property for his business. His business is growing.
Very good.
And he has a full line of, of children behind him that, uh, want to keep it going. And, um, I hope you'll, um, support him and, and what he's trying to do here in Graham and, and, um, consider his offer on the property when it is submitted.
This would be a perfect opportunity for this gentleman to submit a RFQ for development of the property.
So you're, what you're suggesting is let's go ahead and get Mr. Hurlacher.
Yeah, he could submit a proposal just like anyone else.
But he can also just, he can submit an offer on the property right for sale, right?
Absolutely.
We are. Yes, but we cannot enter into a private sale. Has to be a competitive sale. The, the property's been, been open for a competitive sale for-
Explain next.
Many years.
Explain competitive sale to Mr. Hurlacher.
If they, if they agree on the, on an offer, then it would be open and publicized. And then other people could either up, up your offer. Or if no one else had, comes in with a competitive offer, then they would accept.
Absolutely. Exactly. Yep.
We, um, I talked to Nathan a little while back and, and I'm not as well prepared as that lady that came up here. But we did discuss a building on it and, and we're wanting to put a hundred and, I mean, a hundred and thirty by ninety foot building on it. Nathan told me where I needed to stay so I didn't have to put a retainment upon the end and mess with any of the other, you know? And it's, it's in a commercialized industrial area. We're, we're truck, trailer repair, uh, light automotive with some towing. We're small businesses. It's took off pretty well for us. I've got three of my sons that work in the business with us. They want to continue on. Graham is home. That's where we want our business. We looked around at some other properties that are already built and they just, they just didn't fit our needs where we wanted to be. And this property is already cleared. It's a, it's in a, like I said, it's in industrial, about four of our customers are in the area. We have about 40 regular based transportation customers here in Alamance County in Graham that, uh, that use us. We don't want to move away and make it inconvenient for them. So we're just trying to stay in the, uh, in the Graham area and just build a building and, and go from there. Um, I had started looking, I talked to Mr. Lewis, which was handling the, the bit, the real estate for it. And then, uh, I, I got Mr. Costa's, so my son has, so I asked her to do some stuff and we got in touch with Jennifer. And, and it was kind of, it was off the market. Nobody could really find a whole lot about it. But then I, I talked to her a couple of things. She said, go up there. And then I found out tonight they had this meeting. I said, hmm, I better move now if I'm going to move. But, you know, we're very interested. We're, we're going to stay where that property, but it fits us very well. It's already in a, some other tractor trailer shops are in that area. The Burtons are across the street from us. We know, we know them real well. It would just fit us well. And I understand what the lady is, is talking about doing, but I'm, I'd like to put a building. I already have a contractor that's talked to me about what it would cost me and how big a building and what we need to do. I'm not really, this is my first time ever standing here, so I'm a little nervous, but.
Everyone on here loves, would love to see a Graham boy get a Graham property. So they're, they're very supportive, this council is.
Well, Mr. Hurlacher, do you understand the P, P three program? Do you understand how that works? Any questions about it? If we went ahead and put it in that, see the, the Realtor that we had, his contract is ended. So the P three program is something we could do. We could postpone it if you want to, I think, with the consent of the, the city council. I can't, there's five of us, you know what I mean? Do you want to wait and bid through the P three program or?
I think, I think he'd like to make an offer. And so maybe if you could just, um, table it until next month. And then if you don't, I mean, if you don't decide, just give them 30 days to make an acceptable offer and see if you guys can agree to it. And, um, it does make sense for the staff to spend a lot of time to advertise that if you're going, if he's going, if you guys are going to come to a resolution.
Okay. Anybody, uh, would you mind answering a few questions if any?
No, no.
Let's see, we've got, uh, Chip, you first, please. Or Mr. Hurlacher.
So you, you want to put a roughly a 12,000 square foot building up on right, right away?
Yes, sir.
No further questions at this time.
Big questions?
Just a statement, I look forward to the offer, to seeing it when you put it in. Thank you for your interest in it.
Melody?
No, we're good. Mine is for actually Frankie. We're good with that, being able to accept that based on what we've done with the contract ending. We can accept an offer.
Yeah.
At that point, right? We can do that anytime, correct?
We've been accepting offers for years.
Okay, great. I think it's true. Thank you.
And I believe, I'd have to go back to look to see what we specified. Typically, we, we would do an upset bid and there would be required written offer and bid bond. I want to say it's 5%. You would have to put up, um, and then we would go through an upset bid process.
That's only after we accept it. If we were to accept the offer, it would go through the upset bid, correct?
Right. And then you still, still don't have to sell it.
Right.
And honestly, I don't know that there's anything stopping us from approving what Alexa's proposed and work on things concurrently.
With the exception of staff time, put something together, as Jennifer mentioned.
Griffin, questions, please?
No, no.
All right. Anybody else from the floor want to speak on this? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you, Jennifer. All right. If nobody wants to speak, then I'll close it and we'll, we'll talk about it among ourselves. What does everybody think? This process could be on our books as a future site in case it comes up again. We could still do the P three program and let, not put this piece of property in that, I believe, couldn't we? And give him a month to put together a proposal.
We don't have an identified project. And that's a prerequisite for a P three program is to have an identified project.
So you answered my question, isn't it? Okay. What is this, the council thing? Would you rather get a?
We waited nine years. We've had, we've had nothing. What, what is the, what is the hurt? And waiting another month to see what kind of proposal we have to come from someone here?
I support Melody a hundred percent on that. And don't put staff out by putting anything together yet.
Let's hold.
And let's just table this for 30 days and see what happens.
And right after that, we can move forward if we so need to. But after this long, it, it, I don't think speed is one of the issues.
Been, been worried about it. I mean, we have been, but it's taking us long. So we got somebody interested. I think we should hear them out.
Absolutely.
Well, in that case, I move you to page 19. And that recommendation is not on our, uh, suggested motions.
Well, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table this matter until the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank y'all. All in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise. Thank y'all. We appreciate you being here, Jennifer. Thank you, Mr. Hurlacher. Good luck on this. We're pulling for you. Yeah. Chip said sharpen your pencil. Next, we go to number five, the order to demolish, approve ordinance to demolish a vacant house located on 323 Albright Avenue. Who's handling this for staff? Aaron, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Graham staff is seeking authorization to proceed with demolition of a vacant house located at 323 Albright Avenue. According to Alamance County tax records, the property is owned by James K. and Annie S. Jernigan of K Hall. And the structure is approximately 1,680 square feet. As seen in the attached exhibits in your packets, the property owner was originally contacted by the inspections and zoning department on October 25th, 2017 by mail, based on a complaint that a dilapidated house was located on the property. Staff maintained communication with the property owner over the next several months to monitor the status of the abatement. After further deterioration and lack of progress, the property owner was given the timeframe to have the structure demolished. After several attempts to remedy the complaint were unsuccessful, it was determined by the chief building inspector that an order to demolish be issued. The estimated cost that we received from contractors who demolished the structure had a lowest bid of $7,000. They were as high as 12,500. Staff recommendation is for approval. The structure has been inspected and deemed unfit for human habitation and poses a health risk to the community.
Lee, questions?
I do. So Aaron, along with the $7,000, and that's just an estimate that we got to tear it down, that we will then put a lien on the property against the property owner. We've got administrative fees. Do we know how much that's going to be?
That I'm not sure what the total is. But that is in addition to the amount.
Has there been any attempt by the property owner to try to market the land?
Um, and the reason, if you looked at the timeline and the exhibits, why it's taken as long as it has, uh, we have been working with the, uh, K Hall. Past few months to try to, uh, locate individuals who would be interested in purchasing the property from her. And we did think that we had a solution in place, but it just never came to fruition. Uh, we, we still have interested parties in the property. But I think there has been an issue as far as getting, um, the property with a clear will because the, um, the property owners are deceased.
Okay.
It's the legalities are, was holding up the sale. Parties.
Gotcha. So it's my understanding that about 10 years ago, the water was cut off to the structure. And there was an inspection made about a year and a half ago? Is that correct? And during that inspection, the building or the structure was unsecured. The building inspector walked in the back door. The roof was leaking water. There actually was a hole in it. There's a hole in the floor. A wall was falling out, but yet there was power on the structure?
That's what I read as well. That's correct.
Wow.
And the picture that you see, um,
Wow.
caving, I think that actually occurred from the last, uh,
Snowstorm? Yeah, that's a new one, isn't it?
Yeah. But, um, the inspection that was done prior to that by, I'm specialist. It was in pretty rough shape prior to, to this here. So I think this here sort of gives you an indication of where we are now.
Looks like the meter's been pulled on, on the structure too. So that's good. So obviously the, the structure is in such bad shape that there's not a burn option available for training for our fire department either, is it?
Well, I'm not even sure that it was safe enough at the time to, to burn when it was looked at several months back by Jimmy. Chief and Inspector, there were issues with the interior to be able to go in and safely do that. But as you can see now, with the caved in, when I went to take this picture this morning, a bird flew out.
Wow.
So that lets me know that there's animals living in there.
So do you know what the assist value of the property itself without the structure is?
Um, 15,000 is the market land value according to Alamance County.
And once we demolish it, it'll be seven more added, or $7,000 cost plus administrative fees.
Correct.
Yep. If, once we tear this down and there's a lien placed and it's not satisfied, who would, for, who would proceed in the foreclosure proceedings on that to secure that in the future if it becomes delinquent?
I believe. The county would, say the county would have involved in that as well.
Okay, I was going to say, so the county would help out in that process as well? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Melody, questions, please?
Yes, sir.
Griffin?
But no, not at this time.
Shepherd?
My questions have pretty much been answered.
And as far as the fire department usually know is the answer. Okay. Does anybody else want to speak on this from the floor? This is not a usual thing that we do normally. But I'll move the council to page 25. We'll discuss this first and then we'll ask for a motion. So what does everybody think?
Things got to be done. I mean, it's, I, I wouldn't.
No brainer. It's a no brainer.
It's really not a demolish this time. It's just load it up to a truck and haul it off.
You know, I would say that the estimate price should have come down, looking at that picture right there.
Most of it's laying on the ground.
It's just a cleanup now.
But the estimates were done prior to the snow event. So it may be an adjustment. It's still an abatement for the asbestos that you have.
Yeah.
No getting around that.
Those, no, it might be on the ground.
All right. Well, then I'll move you to page 25 of your agenda and ask for a motion from the floor.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance authorizing city staff to proceed with the demolition of the vacant structure located at 323 Albright Avenue.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will oppose likewise. All right. Next, we review the city attorney proposals. So I need to ask everybody what they think about the proposals and where you want to go from here. So this is just discussion among us.
Mayor, I think, looking at the applications that we got in, and we've got seven different entities that put in an application, I would, I'd like to support the idea of maybe going to an interview process and by, either by paper ballot, we put down our top three applicants and then submit that to Darcy. It's all public record, but just identify where it came from. And then we can go through an interview process by reducing the amount of applications down to maybe three. Just an idea.
Let me go to Keith on this one. Let's throw you right here in the mix of this. If we went to a paper ballot, we need to put a name on it so you would, so with the public records.
You don't have to, uh, you could, whatever, whatever you pass around up there is a public record, whether you have a name on it or not. Whatever, whoever read them wouldn't be able, wouldn't be able to determine who, who wrote which ballot.
But we, we could, Keith, we could actually hypothetically pick our top- But we, we could, Keith, we could actually hypothetically pick our top three, write it down on the paper ballot, give it to Darcy, let her determine what the top three vote getters out of fifteen votes is, and then call those three in for an interview process perhaps at the next meeting.
This council is entitled to arrange any process they want to hire their lawyer.
Okay. As long as it's made as public notice, all the ballots, that's all that's required, isn't it?
Don't even have to do it in public.
Right. Yeah.
I like Lee's idea.
Well, I like a portion of it. I, I would rather do the interviews prior to the meeting and then do, then do the voting at the meeting.
You would rather do the interviews of seven different applicants?
No, I like the idea of eliminating them, seven down to either four or three.
Okay.
And then do the interviews between now and the first of February and do our, our position on that.
Oh, well, oh, that, that, I mean, I don't think I oppose that. Just the fact that we narrow it down and just pick the ones that we think are gonna provide the best service for the city and then go through the interview process, but yeah.
I might suggest five candidates instead of four.
I like three.
I like three.
I think, I think...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose that we actually go into a closed session for a few minutes and we actually determine how we would like to go ahead and proceed and discuss it further on how many we wanna break down and if we want to eliminate that many and how we wanna proceed. There are questions, I think, that need to be answered on some of these. And is everyone clear enough and available enough that you can actually sit down tonight and say, we can eliminate these three? Let's go to, let's go to these four and do, do a process? Are we that far along?
I appreciate the idea, but the, the direction we go, the way we do it is open session. If we wanna go talking about names, we could go closed session.
Right.
But the theory of how we're doing it, I think, needs to be an open. Is that right, Keith?
The relationship with your lawyer is the most protected relationship in the law, attorney-client privilege. You can go back there and talk about me by yourself. You can go back there and talk about a future lawyer by yourself and how, and how to go about picking it. Now, Mr. Boni doesn't like that analysis, but that's the law, in my view. So I believe you can have a conversation in closed session about how to choose this public official, because the city attorney is a public official, and how, how to go about appointing him.
What does everybody else think? What do you think?
I'd be fine discussing it in closed session if that's...
I've got a problem with that, Mayor, simply because it wasn't advertised. We're gonna have to give a reason to go into closed session, which I know we can come up with a reason at this point, but I just don't, I just don't think it's appropriate if the public is not aware that we're gonna go into a closed session to do that. I just, I, I believe in advertising. I know legally we can do it. I know that we can go into a closed session and just stand up and go, we're going into a closed session. But for me, when it's not on that agenda and the public's not aware that we're going to do that, I'm a little uncomfortable doing it. I think we need to, and I understand the reason, we don't wanna get into the merit of all these different applicants and get into this big debate about that. I get that. But a paper ballot will take care of that. It'll narrow the process down and then we can start the interview process. And I, I think it can be done transparent and out in public and in front of the public without having to go into closed session and get those particulars. That's just my personal opinion.
Griffin, what do you think?
I, I agree with that. I think we could do paper ballot. And personally, I think three, but if everybody wants to go four or five, I'm, I can live with that too. But I think we could do it here and with paper ballot, just my feeling.
So I've got two that want to do a paper ballot and two that want to go in closed session. So I guess it's my call. I think on the, um...
I, I need to speak, Mr. Mayor, at some point on the legal position that the city is taking.
Fine. In a few minutes. Let us get this...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would wanna do that before you vote.
Okay, that's fine. Um... I don't want any names mentioned in the open session. So I'm fine with going into closed for that. But I'm also fine with us moving this down to three or four or five, whatever number you come up with right here. Long as when you vote, you put your name on that vote. I don't think it should be closed. I think when the night's over, I think Isaac or Bill will come out here and say, well, Jerry said this.
You're proposing to do that vote tonight?
The vote on eliminating it down to a manageable, no.
Or the interview process.
Or how many we're going to interview.
That's the, that's the problem we need.
Okay.
And to pick tonight by paper ballot are three, four, or five choices?
Top three or four, or whatever we decide that number is. I think that's the question.
I think three is too low. Never having met anybody on this list until tonight, I, I, I'm not comfortable with that.
I think there are too many questions, guys. Are we truly giving these folks a, a, you know, an opportunity here when we haven't been able to ask questions?
So you're in favor of interviewing all of them?
I, I didn't say that, but I would want to hear from the rest of this board on why we would eliminate who and why.
So when staff takes a request for proposals, as we did nominating the small area downtown plan, I think there was eleven proposals that came in and staff quickly weeded that down to three based on the qualifications of the proposal.
Right.
And I think we all have a pretty good idea. I think we can narrow down the top three applicants here that would provide the best service for the city of Graham. I don't think it needs to be that we're going to discuss whether we think the worth of someone in front of an open council in front of the public is worthy and whether we agree to bring them into the interview process. I think it's just simply pick your top three. Let's bring them in and interview them and roll on and not have to explain why we didn't pick the other four.
Okay. Just to go beyond that as well, though, there are different things in these proposals that we've gotten that have to do with financial and time period. And that would be the question that I would have, Lee. It's not a matter of the qualified. It's a matter of what are we getting for that qualification? And how much are we getting? Is it worth our dollar to get? What is, what can we get for the most? What are we getting the best possible person that we can get for the city?
And you can't...
And in so doing that, it's a discussion of, and if you'll notice in several of those applications, there were, there were, there's discussion about, that I would be willing to discuss and negotiate. So do we have that? If we limit ourselves to say three, are we, are we getting the picture? Is that the picture you want?
See, the, anytime that there's a request for proposals, I think it's very important that you put information in there because I have put in a lot of requests for proposals and there's not a second chance. But that open end that I'd be willing to negotiate is that second chance. You know, don't exclude me. I will do better. Well, I want your best offer. And I think we've got that. And I think on that merit, we can, we can pick and choose which ones we think are the best to move forward to that next process.
Okay.
That's just my personal opinion. For me, what number would you feel comfortable with?
With the number of...
If we were to able to...
I, I'm happy to split the difference with four.
Okay.
I, I think that there are, I think there are potential. I think some that might be easily, but I think there are some others that, that need a fair shake and we need to look at.
I would support four.
I can live with four.
I, I can live with that.
If everybody's in favor of that, I can live with four. Or five, whatever you wanna do.
Four. Let's narrow it down. We don't need to, we don't need to drag everybody in front of us if, if we can just narrow down and think, and, and pick the ones we think will be the best fit.
So you wanna eliminate them to four? We got a consensus on that?
I agree with that.
And do you wanna do it by a paper ballot?
Absolutely.
That you write your name on?
I agree with that. I think we need to identify the ballot.
I had a question from Tom prior to us doing that. What is your question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, your suggestion is within the law. I'm afraid the attorney's opinion was, does not really fall within the law with respect to the written ballots. Let me just cite, it says specifically in the statute for the open meetings law that except as provided in this subsection or by joint resolution of general assembly, a public body may not vote by secret or written ballot. If a public body decides to vote by written ballot, each member of the body so voting shall sign his or her ballot and the minutes of the public body shall be available for public, uh, excuse me, and the ballot shall be available for public inspection in the office of the clerk or secretary to the public body immediately following the meeting at which the vote takes place. So the statute itself is very clear that what the mayor described is a, an allowable process and what the attorney summarized was not. Let me also go to the second issue, although that appears to be hopefully moot for tonight. But the attorney also is not correct with respect to the ability of the council to just willy-nilly decide to go into closed session about the attorney. The statute's provision with respect to dealing with attorneys is also outlined very clearly and directly in the statute. And it says that the, um, the board may go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. It is a, it is a right with the attorney you hire, not ones you are deciding or thinking about hiring. So I think that is an important distinction in terms of that dimension, whether that becomes an issue tonight or not. It appears you've already reached a consensus on the number. Another way other boards have done it is to just set a number of minimum votes that somebody received to be, be considered. But what you've come up with is also not accepted.
Thanks, sir.
Legals.
Okay. Is everybody working on this?
Yes, sir.
And who you wanna keep and your name? All right. We'll give them to Darcy and let her tally them. In the meantime, anybody got anything they wanna pass around? We've got a few more people that wanna speak and we'll do that after we finish this. Looking like he's gonna leave us at any time. Yes. Tom, I appreciate your direction. I thought that would be right, too. I looked at the little pink thing, too, and felt like that vote would be fine as long as I wrote my name on it. Griffin, how'd you trip to Atlanta, go to you?
In and out.
In and out. All right. My trip to Arizona went wonderful. I played with the baby for twenty days.
Twenty days.
I did more crawling than I did when I was a rookie in the fire department.
Had your knees feel...
Oh, yeah. We had a good time. Okay. Take your time. We went right. Hmm? Yeah. Yeah. Miss, Miss University is... Thinking about an interview date while doing this. Time and all that stuff and it's convenient. Guys, probably not the best to do it at night. Three or less, five, that's pretty good. Okay.
You want this back?
That's up to you. You can do it, I can do it. Thank you, ma'am. All right, our four people that we're gonna interview are the Knopf Group, Brothers, Giles, and Ward Coleman. And I'll ask the staff to send a letter of appreciation to those not selected. Frank, if you'll take care of that for us, please. And next, what we need to do is to decide a date for these interviews, date and time. What does everybody think?
Can we get Darcy to send out a doodle poll?
Do I need to explain the doodle poll to you again? We'll get Darcy to send the doodle poll out. You send the doodle poll to the Sunshine List.
So...
You know?
Will we do this all in one day?
Yeah.
About four interviews. You're talking about four hours at least.
Yeah. I just wonder if we just wanna carry it just one day or over a two-day period?
Options. Right. Yeah, we probably, I'll ask Darcy to contact the applicants and see what's available for them. And then we'll do a doodle poll after that, okay? Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, next, we have issues not on tonight's agenda. Richard Chevlin. Richard is a member of the Alco Vets and a business owner here in Graham. Richard, come up if you would, please, sir. It is good to see you, my man.
My name's Richard Chevlin, five-ten, Wildwood Lane, Graham, North Carolina. Tonight, I'd like to open the discussion with the feathered flags that are currently against the regulations for the businesses inside the Graham downtown. My wife and I both own two businesses right there on Washington Street, which it's hard to catch the people coming around that corner without having the tethered flags or feathered flags. But we were asked very nicely to remove the flags, which we have. But this is, after speaking with several of the businesses in Graham, this has become an issue to where, you know, this is a way for us to advertise our business. And without that, you can't have signs or you can't, the yard signs don't do enough. But like I said, just like to open the discussion of changing this part of the regulations where these are, we could put something in place where, you know, tasteful, you know, useful flags, certain distance from the road, things like that.
And you're not in the overlay district, right? Do y'all know where Richard's business is?
I'm right there on Washington Street, right before the river.
Right off of Providence.
Yeah.
The meal building on the right.
Okay. Yes. Gotcha. Yeah.
So he's not in the overlay district. And the way that curve is, he's right. It's hard to grab people there. Be tough and to grab.
I don't know what a feather flag is.
Feather, that's the big bode.
Oh, like a, okay, promotional.
They, yeah, they call them feathered.
Okay, gotcha.
So what does everybody think? Think that's something we need to look into or...
Certainly look into it. I'm, I'm not overly familiar with the, the way it's written.
It's written, they're not permitted.
The way it's written, they're not permitted and we've had.
Not at all?
Not at all, especially in overlay. We've had issues with car lots, especially I believe. Those, they're big users of them.
Right.
But they're big users of 500 of them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Also, I'm not like, we have promotional balloons. I know I've seen them at the overnight meals, but I'm not sure. So I haven't put them out yet. Not sure if they're part of that ordinance, so I would need time to also make sure that.
I don't know.
Do the balloons follow that ordinance? Does anyone?
You know, I don't know, Richard. Do they?
I've never had the question before. I'm. The way the, our, it's convoluted. I would need to look through it to see before I.
We'll get staff to look into it for you and see where we can go with this and bring something back to, it'll go through the planning zone, you know, the whole, whole smear, but I appreciate that.
Now, you did say something that I'm curious about. You said inside the overlay. What about the businesses inside the overlay? Are they?
They're a little bit more restrictive than.
Right.
Than you are. You are, I was just telling them you were outside the overlay, so you, you wouldn't be as restrictive.
Some of the businesses I spoke with are inside the overlay, obviously, and they were, you know, they were concerned. You know, to see how the board would react and it's good to know that we can open up a conversation anyway.
This board is for you and. But sometimes the answer is no, so.
Only wear that.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Richard. I appreciate it. And Jennifer, I think you and Chuck wanted to speak on the same thing.
Um, well, you know, I rent several properties, so the verdict was not happy that we got a violation letter. As well at Farm Services and at Colonial Hardware saying that's what the flags look like, Griffin.
Mercy. There you go. May I see that as well?
Conundrum in the sense that. You know, we're a steel dealer at Farm Services, a Trager dealer, a Toro dealer and a Simplicity dealer. And every year. We pay thousands of dollars as a dealer. You, you don't really get to choose so much. What you get. They send this thing called a point of purchase merchandiser and. I believe a couple of months ago. Paul Kreutz had come and said about his sign there, because you know. These people that give these dealerships away, they want certain signage, they want this sort of stuff to, to, to happen. And so. You know, you really don't, this is what you get and I'm going to pay for it whether you let me put it out or not. So every year. You know, Simplicity, because I'm a Simplicity dealer, I'm going to be paying, you know, $3,000 to steal for advertising and. They're going to send me these flags and these POP materials and stuff, so. It's a little frustrating, you know, that we're paying for it and we can't put it out. And I, I honestly did not think we were violating anything or doing anything wrong, because when we got the encroachment. When the city did the sidewalk in front of Farm Services, Chuck can speak a little bit more towards this, but. They said, are we going to be able to still put out what we wanted to put out like we were? And they were out then and. So the city said, yes, it was, it was fine. And I know y'all are a complaint based. Driven, but I'm just saying we had them out that whole time and I, I don't know that you can do that, but maybe we could come to some resolution that. I really did think that kind of fell under the temporary sign because every night we bring them in and every day we put them out, just like our other goods. But it really does, the whole ordinance really needs to be looked at because. It says devices consisting of banners, streamers, pennants, windblown propellers. Strung light bulbs, which is Christmas lights, similar installations shall be prohibited. So I just. I, I just think that, you know. The city is in a, I look at you guys as a partnership, the city with my business. And we have to work together to try to make things good. And we bought Farm Services, that business was gonna close. It absolutely was gonna close. And when we bought it. The sales tax revenue that you guys got from that versus 2012 to where we have it today. It's seven times greater than it was in 2012. And a lot of that has to do with advertising. So it seems like the city would be out there, since they're also benefiting from the sales tax, that they'd be out there waving the flag, trying to get as much business to my business. As possible, because you guys win too. And so I just want you to think of it from that perspective is that, you know, this Trager flag that was in violation is in my parking lot on private property. It's not an easement. It's not like the one at Farm Services is. It's not, um, I get. I know the reason that this was done, because I happened to be on the city council back then. And they had put like, I don't know, 13 flags or something in front of the new. Stop shop thing that you drive through thing that's down there by the Arby's area. And it was too much, you know, 13. And I think they had, I thought they had, we had narrowed it down to just two and that they would be temporary and as long as you brought them in and. Every night at five, five o'clock when you close it, it was okay. So maybe we can work with the staff to try to make everybody happy and. And I, I'm sure Mr. Chevlin doesn't mind bringing his in at five o'clock every day. But we want to advertise these businesses if we want to grow them. And that benefits the city as well. So I'm just asking for y'all to consider that when you consider. Before you consider the word no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer, your picture if you want it back. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, I will take the staff. Let's look at that and see what other cities are doing in their overlay districts and we will come back and look at that. That's the way you get things changed. You play with them for a while until they don't work. If they don't work, then we need to change them.
Can we expand that? The, the one gentleman doesn't have a business in the overlay, so we need to expand that.
Well, overall.
Right.
Overall. Okay, with that, Nathan, you got anything else?
No, Ms. Gray.
Mayor, Mary. Mary.
Just as a reminder, you received a Friday update that the city has been awarded $1,000 to the American Company of Economic Operations.
Thank you, ma'am. Keith, you got anything else?
No, I was going to provide Mr. Boney with a rejoinder to his legal opinion he gave you. But I, but I won't, I won't take your time to do that now. I promise not to write newspapers if he promises not to practice.
Aaron, if you got anything there. Darcy. Melody.
Yes, sir.
Griffin.
No, sir.
Shepherd.
No, sir.
Lee.
No, sir.
Frankie.
No, sir.
Okay, I do want to thank Mary for the articles and stuff you're putting in Facebook and the rest of the media. We appreciate it and it's being a very big hit. Thank you very much. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move, ma'am.
I need a second.
Second.
Say aye. Don't forget the fire chiefs. Going to resign, not resign, he's going to retire.
It's on your calendar.
Yes.